Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting today, Thursday, July 13th, 6:00. Roll call. Oh. Elaine disappeared. Oh, there she is.
Chair Robarts.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Fitzgerald.
Here.
Board Member Lautowski.
Here.
Board Member Newsteen.
Here.
Board Member Edmondson.
Present.
Board Member Hayes is absent. Board Member Clements?
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Approval of the minutes? Do I have any discussion about the minutes? No minutes? Okay, great. City Attorney, do you want to make your presentation?
Yes.
Excellent.
At the pleasure of the Board.
Okay.
All right, good evening. My name is Kristi Gatto, and I am with Torcivia Donlin, Gatto, and Rubin. We are the City Attorney. And if you may recall, some of you were here when I gave this presentation before. This is sort of an update, just to provide it, to run through it again, and in case you have any questions regarding the laws that are applicable to this Board and some specific requirements that are applicable to each of your positions. So, we will go through it, and at any time, if you have any questions, please just stop me, and let's have a discussion, because sometimes this presentation is more helpful and beneficial if we just stop and sort of have a discussion about any issues, okay? So, what we're going to go through... Is it here or here? Okay, I'll try from here. Okay. All right. So, what we're going to be going over this evening is the Florida Sunshine Law, the Florida Public Records Law, the ethics laws, quasi-judicial matters, and then any questions that you may have or comments. We go to the next slide. Before I give this presentation, I do like to have a couple disclaimers. First of all, this is sort of just an overview of these laws, and for some of you, just an update. If... What should really guide you in your position is really your common sense and your sense of what's right and what's fair. And so, it's the appearance of impropriety that's always sort of your guide, that, hmm, maybe I shouldn't be doing this, or I have a question about this. That's when you want to reach out to city staff or to our office and ask questions, depending on what the issue is, or for any issue you have, you know? Certainly start with staff, and they may be answer your question. If not, if it's more legal, then we may get involved. But always, if you feel in your gut something's not right, that's probably when you should reach out. Also, keep in mind, especially with ethics issues, each issue is unique, and ethics sometimes can get very specific. So, if you think you might have a conflict of interest or something like that, as soon as you realize that, please bring it up, because we may need to do some more research. We may need to get an opinion. So, bring up each ethics issue as they arise, the sooner the better. But each is usually unique and requires sometimes usually research on each issue. So, those are just my disclaimers. Little knowledge is a dangerous thing, so use your appearance of impropriety as your guidepost. Next slide. So, the first area I want to talk about is Florida Sunshine Law. This is going to be in section, Chapter 286 of the Florida statute. And basically, what the Sunshine Law is, is in the absence of a statutory exemption, it applies to the gathering of two or more board members who discuss a matter that will foreseeably come before them for action. So, in reality, what this means is anytime two or more of you board members get together to talk about an issue that's going to come before you, or foreseeably come before you, you have to comply with the Sunshine Law. And what that means, if we go to the next slide, is that in order to comply with the Sunshine Law, you've got to provide public notice before your meeting. You've got to have your meeting open to the public. Minutes have to be taken, and if you're going to be taking official action, you have to allow public participation. Now, when the Sunshine Law, when you usually hear about it in the news, the way it comes up with is two board members, two or more board members from a local agency, have private conversations about an issue that will foreseeably come before them. And they don't do it in a public meeting. They don't do it with public notice. Certainly, there's no minutes, and somehow, they get caught. And that's how you hear about Sunshine Law violations. It's... The law is really to prevent y'all from making a decision outside the sunshine. They want all of your official decisions and all of your discussions on a decision made in the sunshine. So, staff usually make sure all of the Sunshine Law requirements are met in terms of public notice, open to the public, the minutes, and obviously, public participation. But what you're charged with is making sure that two or more of you don't discuss issues that will come before you outside a public meeting. So, just keep that in mind, anytime... This doesn't mean you guys can't socialize. This doesn't mean you can't talk on the phone. All this means is you can't discuss really the business that you do as board members together. So, if there's a development going on, and you really want to talk to your other board member, you've got to save that discussion for the public meeting. On the next slide, if you violate the Sunshine Law, the action that you take, the official action that you take, will be void, meaning you have to do the entire process over. There could be criminal penalties. You could get removed from office. The biggest penalty for the Sunshine Law violation is attorney's fees. If the city gets sued because you or someone from the city violated the Sunshine Law, the plaintiff could get a ward of attorney's fees. So, there's a monetary penalty to the city if someone is caught violating the sunshine and someone sues over it. So, that's usually the biggest penalty. If you go to the next slide. What should you do if inadvertently, there's a Sunshine Law violation? Perhaps you didn't realize the issue was coming before the Board, or perhaps you were having a conversation with someone on email, and you didn't realize other board members were involved? If you think something like that has happened, reach out to city staff or our office as soon as possible, because you can cure a Sunshine Law violation. What you need to do, what we'd need to do then, is quickly hold a public meeting, consistent with the rules of the Sunshine Law, and explain what happened. And then, any discussion you had with that other board member or more than one board member, make it sunshine bright, so that the public then knows what was said, you know, in the email or behind closed doors. And that way, you cure the Sunshine Law violation. So, then if someone sues after that point, you fix the issue, and they really don't have a lawsuit. So, if something happens, and sometimes this can happen, a lot of times, you see it now on social media, where possibly not this Board, but sometimes with governing bodies, where they use a lot of social media, board members don't realize they're in the same trail of posts on an issue, and they inadvertently violate the sunshine. That's where you see it more nowadays. But you can cure it. You just need to bring it to our attention sooner rather than later. All right, so, that's the Sunshine Law. Is there any questions? Okay. Then, we'll go to Florida Public Records Law. This is Chapter 119, Florida statutes. And what I've listed on this slide is basically all of the sections within Chapter 119 that deal with the Sunshine Law. And if you ever have any trouble sleeping, you could actually go and check out those subsections and read through them. So, we go to the next slide. So, what is a public record? Basically, a public record is all the documents that you receive from the city. And public records doesn't just cover documents. It covers the audio of this meeting. It covers the video of this meeting. It's basically any material that deals with official city business. So, when you get an email from the city that says, "Hey, we're going to have a meeting," that's a public record. When you email back the city and say, "Hey, I'll be there," that's a public record. Anytime you talk with someone about official business as a board member, you are creating, if it's in written format or otherwise, you are creating a public record. For the most part, usually advisory boards like this, most of the public records you deal with are ones that come from the city or when you respond directly back to the city. Other, you know, the governing board, the city commission, council, they often create public records, but more so, you're dealing with records that are sent to you, and maybe sometimes emails you send back to the city. One comment on emails, all city emails are retained indefinitely. So, if you email something back to the city, they're going to always have it. So, don't worry. If you delete an email from the city, you might think, "Oh, I've just deleted a public record." No, the city has it. We have all the emails. So, anytime you want to make sure that your correspondence as a public record is kept, email to the city, and it's always on their email system. So, below that, on the next slide, these are examples, and like I said, of public records. Your emails to and from the city, the agenda and the agenda backup that you receive, obviously, that's a public record. But some of the things you may not think about as public records are if you post on social media, and you post about, "Hey, I'm a board member, and I'm going to go to the city tonight and decide on this issue." You know, "This is what I want to see," or "This is what I plan on saying." That's a public record, even though it may be on Facebook, maybe it's on, you know, Instagram. Technically, it's a public record. If you have... Leave a cellphone message for staff member and say, "Hey, I've got an emergency. I'm not going to be able to make it to the meeting tonight." Technically, that's a public record, because it's now created a voice message, something dealing with city business. So, those are all... That's the way you have to think about public records. It's not just written form. It's a variety of ways that you communicate about official city business. We go to the next slide. So, what isn't a public record? Well, sometimes I see y'all making little notes on maybe on your agenda. If those notes are just for your own personal use, it's not a public record. It's just a note for you. If you ever draft an email to the city and then say, "Oh, I'm not going to send that," and you delete it, never sent it, it's just a draft, you haven't created a public record. Other things that happen to come up, if you guys happen to text each other about, "Hey, we're all going to go, you know, out tomorrow night. You want to go?" Doesn't deal with official city business, and just because you're board members, that doesn't make it official city business. That's just a personal text, an email. It's not a public record. If you send birthday cards to each other, not official records. What's important to keep in mind, too, is not where the record is kept or how you maintain it. It's really the substance of the record. So, if you send staff a birthday card, and they put it in their desk in the office, that doesn't make it a public record. It's still just a birthday card. It's not a public record. It's just a personal card. That's all. So, there is a difference. It's got to really be pertaining to official city business. And so, for y'all, usually that deals with planning and zoning or variances. So, if it doesn't really deal with that, there's probably a good argument that it's not a public record. We go to the next slide. The bottom line really is to keep in mind that you're going to be dealing with reviewing and creating public records in your position. The location doesn't really matter. There's no real privacy involved in a lot of the records you deal with. You just got to be careful and think about it, because if you're a person that uses a lot of social media, and you're sending out information about what you do as a board member, you become the custodian of that public record. So, just keep that in mind. You know, I don't know how many of you actually use social media and how much you actually correspond about what you do as a board member, but if you do, you got to retain it. So, my recommendation is, don't. And then, you never have to worry about retaining public records, and if there's ever some kind of request for public records, you can simply say, "I don't use that for any kind of discussion about my business as a board member." Easy answer. But there's no reason that it's not illegal to use social media to talk about what you do as a board member. You just have to retain it. So, if that ever is the case, like I said, all city emails are always retained. You could always send a copy of it via city email. Just send it to the city and say, "Oh, I posted about this issue, so I'm sending it to the city, so it's retained." Then, you know it's retained. You don't have to worry about retaining it yourself. All right, so, that's public records. Are there any questions about public records? All right, great. We'll go on to the ethics laws. Now, the ethics laws, there's two ethics laws that apply to local governments in Palm Beach County. The first ethic law is the state ethic law, which is in Chapter 112, Part 3 of the Florida statutes. And then, you have the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics, which is a county code that was passed several years back. Usually, if you check the county code, it's stricter than the state code. So, if you're in compliance with the county code, you're more than likely in compliance overall. But it's always good, certainly when I get an ethics question, to check both sources just to make sure there's not any, you know, oddities between the two different codes. We go to the next slide. Okay, so, your primary ethical considerations. These are the major areas that the ethics codes, both of them, deal with. You've always got to be aware of who you're soliciting or accepting gifts from, especially in your roles where you're approving developments, you're approving variances. You want to make sure you're not accepting a gift from someone who represents a developer or represents a property owner seeking a variance. You want to make sure as board members that you don't have a contract with the city. You can run into conflicts with that. Obviously, as a board member, you can't guarantee that you're going to vote a certain way, because you know the person who's applying for the variance or some type of development approval. That would be a misuse of your office. You also have to keep in mind that you're not supposed to disclose insider information. So, sometimes as board members, you may find out something about a development that's coming. Even though that information may be considered a public record and available to the public, you need to be careful and not run out and buy property right next to where the new development is coming in, because you have, you know, a head start on that information. It doesn't happen that much, and there's often, you know, times that there's a good argument that the public was well aware of that development coming in, but just keep that in the back of your mind, too. It's like using insider information appropriately. Also, conflicting employment and contracts situations. And then, the big one, which I have bolded there, is voting conflicts. So, if we can go to the next slide. So, this is the big issue, and typically, is a big issue for planning and zoning board members, is voting on a prohibited matter where it would result in a special financial benefit to you or the laundry list of folks there that are on that slide that you have to be aware of. Are you going to be voting or asked to vote on a matter that's going to benefit you somehow or benefit these other folks that you're related to or that you work with or that you're involved with? As it says, this is a case-by-cases basis, and sometimes you have to look at the class of the... The size of the class that's involved. So, an example of this would be, I had this at another city. Before the Planning and Zoning Board, there was a big hotel that was going to go up. And the planning and zoning board member contacted us and said, "Hey, I live across the street from that development. Can I vote on this issue?" And we had to look at the class size of how many people were involved in ownership around that hotel, because if the class size is small enough, you may have a conflict under the conflict laws. Well, fortunately, he lived in a condo. There was a bunch of other condos around, so the class size was quite large. So, his conflict was really de minimis based on the ownership. But if it had just been single-family homes around that hotel, that was a... Would be a completely different story and maybe conflicted out. So, we do have to look at class size and those types of things. So, keep that in mind when you see these agendas come before you, and if it's near proximity to where you live or one of those other folks that you may be related to or work for, you need to think about, "Hey, wait a minute. Do I have a conflict here?" And we can look into it and go from there. Now, keep in mind, like I said, that in that case, the class size was so big, the benefit to him of new development was de minimis, and that's sort of the bottom bullet point. If the benefit is really speculative or really small, you're not going to have a conflict. And he didn't have a conflict in that case. So, we go to the next slide. If you do have a voting conflict, there's a process that you need to go through to abstain from voting on the issue. And under the local laws, you cannot even be involved in the discussion. So, once we find out you have a conflict, and we confirm through the ethics rules that you have a conflict, you have to abstain from voting and from discussing. So, sometimes it's best to just get up and remove yourself from the dais for that item. But what this is pointing out is Section 286.012, is that while you're present and you don't have a voting conflict, you have to vote. Okay? So, every member has to vote. The only other issue is if it's quasi-judicial. Now, for y'all, the quasi-judicial decisions you make are the variances. So, when you're making a decision on a variance, there's another layer to it, which we'll get into shortly. But keep in mind, you have to vote on every item if you're present unless you declare a conflict. Okay? If we go to the next slide. This is sort of going into a little bit more detail about the process of if we declare that you have a conflict, you have to publicly disclose a conflict, and usually, we would do that at the beginning of the meeting. You have to abstain from participating and voting. And in terms of participation, the local ethics rules go as far to, you cannot even provide public comment. So, completely no involvement in the issue. You have to file the Ethics Form 8B and then avoid all participation. So, that's a pretty strict rule, and we'll help walk you through those if you have a conflict. The quasi-judicial, we're going to get into now, but I'll go ahead and preface that... Yes, ma'am?
On voting... I am an alternate. Does that mean that I get to vote also?
If we have... Usually, if we have a board member absent, and I'm assuming we do tonight? Yeah. You vote when a regular board member is absent.
Okay. But if they're all here, then I don't get a vote?
Correct.
Okay.
So, on quasi-judicial matters, the quasi-judicial matters are for y'all, the variances. And what that means is, in the city's code, there's criteria that have been decided on by the city council, and when someone wants a variance from the code, they have to satisfy that criteria. So, in quasi-judicial, what you're doing is you're taking a set of facts and applying it to existing policy. That's different from a legislative decision where you're creating policy. So, quasi-judicial is policy application. And for your variances, you look at what they're asking to sort of avoid in the code. You make sure they meet the criteria, and then you grant or deny it. That's quasi-judicial. You are sitting as the judges. So, when you're sitting as the judges, you have to be impartial. So, going to the... Back to the voting conflict, if you don't believe that you can be impartial in a quasi-judicial matter, for whatever reason, you say, "Absolutely, I can't just listen to the evidence and decide if it satisfies the criteria. I am completely against this. I am biased." You're not going to be impartial. Then, you can actually, in that situation, also abstain from being involved in voting. And that's because it's quasi-judicial, and we always want to maintain your... Be in an impartial hearing board, and so, if you feel like, "I can't judge this based on the evidence," then you can also abstain from voting in that case. Going back into quasi-judicial, we go to the next slide. I sort of just covered this. Like I said, for y'all, the variances. You do review the things that the city council... You make a recommendation to the city council, like the special exceptions. Technically, they're quasi-judicial the whole way through the process, but since you're just advisory on those matters, the real quasi-judicial hearing is before the final decision-making board, which is the city council. So, I don't know. Do we usually do those as quasi-judicial at this level? Okay. So, you can do them as quasi-judicial, but since you're just making a recommendation, there's no harm in treating them as quasi-judicial at your level, but ultimately, for the city council, that's where they would challenge the record before the city council. So, really, the city council is the real board, but you would be the initial board hearing it. So, again, those types of things, site plan, variances, special exception, all of those things listed there, there's criteria in the code that tells you how to approve or deny those requests. So, therefore, you're applying policy, you're not making policy. So, that's when it's quasi-judicial. Below that, on the next slide, is the following are not quasi-judicial. So, the comprehensive plan amendments, those are always legislative decision, because in your comprehensive plan, you're always setting policy. And while I believe you guys serve as the LPA, the Land Planning Agency, you make the recommendation to the city council, that's a legislative decision. You know, if we consider at this level, it's legislative here, it's legislative at the city council level, so you're not sitting as the judges. You're just making... Saying, "Here's the policy we want for the city." The other examples there are also all legislative decisions, or they're administrative or executive actions. Like approving the minutes. That's an administrative action, and other executive actions that you may take as the board. If we go to the next slide. As you know, with quasi-judicial decisions, we always have to have our ex parte communications disclosed. The reason for that is that that way, everybody knows what you know and what investigation you may have done, who you may have talked to before you make a quasi-judicial decision. This way, it keeps everything at a fair level playing field. So, if you didn't talk to the applicant, now the applicant knows who you may have talked to. Now, the applicant knows what you may have done as investigation. Keeps everything fair. And even if you were in a court of law and the judge went out and did his or her own investigation, you would want to know that the judge looked into this issue personally. So, that's why it's to keep it all fair for everybody. So, these are the things that you would want to disclose, any site visits, whether you reviewed correspondence, whether you talked to the participants. And this includes talking to city staff. If you talk with city staff about an item, you have specific questions, you want to go with... Over them before the meeting, you should disclose talking to staff, because technically, the staff... The city is a party to every quasi-judicial hearing. The applicant is the other party. So, you want to make sure you disclose who you've talked to on each side. If we go to the next slide. Like, this is sort of what I just covered at the outset of the meeting to ensure everybody has knowledge of the matter. And it also helps to protect the record on appeal, because as you know from a legal process for variances, where you guys make the final decision on a variance, if the applicant... If you deny the variance, let's say, and the applicant says, "I don't agree with that. I'm going to appeal it," they appeal it to circuit court. Well, what circuit court does is they look at the record that was created before you guys. The record is what was created here. They have to provide a transcript. They provide the record. Well, the worst thing that could happen is that we find out after the fact that you had talked with someone about the... had talked with someone about this, you had done a lot of research about this, and it's not revealed in the record. It's a due process violation, and it might send the whole matter back to us to do it all over again. So like it says there, it just keeps to keep the record straight on appeal. So if you disclose it upfront, it's been disclosed, and that way, they can't claim that they didn't know. All right. And that is the end of it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How often do you do this training every two years? Is this the way the state shows us tonight?
What's that?
Every year, two years, we go through this training.
Yeah. Has it been about two years?
Now, you start planning for the next two years or?
For ethics, you have to go through the county system.
Right.
You still have to do that process where you go online?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a separate process. But you can have this training as often as you want, or not as often as you want. Are there any further questions? No? Okay. All right.
Thank you. You were really wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Bree.
Pardon?
Yeah. Okay, the regular agenda, item two. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval to construct a 4,646 drive-in fast food restaurant. Site is located in the River Bridge Center in the southwest corner of Forest Hill Boulevard and Jog Road. Kara, you gonna?
Yes.
Good.
Good evening.
And I must say, you know, I know this is not quasi-judicial, but we did have a little conversation about this out in the hall, because we couldn't figure out where the site was. It wasn't the merits of the site, it was just.
Location.
Location. Thank you.
And I'll show you that in the presentation, which is what I told you.
Yes.
In the lobby.
Exactly.
So this is an amendment to the River Bridge Commercial Center, which is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of South Jog Road and Forest Hill Boulevard. The overall site plan was approved in 1973. It was, or it was annexed into the city in 1973. It was the one and only DRI within the City of Green Acres, a development of regional impact. And it was all part of River Bridge, Olive Tree, and the River Bridge Commercial Center. So it's a, it's a large site, and over the years, it has been amended multiple times from its original approval, which was given on January 20, 1986, by the city council. It originally started out with a shopping center, movie theater, grocery store, drugstore, office space. They've made modifications over the years. They let go of the movie theater, they brought in a gym. They've also had the development of eight out parcels on the site, one of which, one of which is actually owned by the inline owner for the master center as well. So in this case, this site is not considered an out parcel, which means it's just not separated for individual ownership, like some of the other out parcels, such as Wendy's or KFC, Applebee's. There's the International House of Pancakes that's there, too. So this will actually still be part of the overall site. And the parking that's on that site will be replaced with development, and we'll talk about how they're going, how that affects the overall numbers of the overall site. So this is, there've been 24 modifications, 12 administrative approvals for the site. And these can be minor things, like paint colors or signage. And we've also had some, about 12 site plan approvals through the years for the site as well. The petition tonight is to add a 4,680 square foot fast food restaurant with a drive-through facility. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Trying to lean as close as I can. I believe the special exception, that is a concurrent application, came before you previously, SE 2103, for the drive-through addition to the site. That is a special exception, and that is for the addition of the use of a drive-through on the site. So overall, the site itself is about 27.48 acres, and that includes the plaza, the parking, the landscaping. In order to develop the Chick-fil-A site, they are removing 93 parking spaces and two terminal landscape islands from the site. They're proposing to add an additional 4,680 square feet to the site for the development. And right now, with that addition, they'll have about 231,952 square feet of development on the site. There are a total, with this change, there will be a total of 100, 1,345 parking spaces and 43 handicap spaces. So a total of 490 of parking spaces are added for the out parcels with 19 handicap spaces. So while they are removing the 93 space, 93 spaces, they are adding 20 spaces to the site. But overall, the parcel has been overparked by almost 200 spaces. So they are still overparked by 185 spaces on the site. So it's a lot of parking, and we do have a, you know, a high peak demand for retail shopping centers. So, and they are even over that still with the addition of the Chick-fil-A. There are two vehicular ingress egress access points to Forest Hill Boulevard. One is the signalized intersection at River Bridge Boulevard, and the other is in the center of the plaza on Forest Hill Boulevard. And then they have two access points off of South Jog Road. One is kind of a secondary access point on the southernmost portion of the site, and then the other is an ingress egress with a cut, yes.
Kara, those egresses and entrances are for the shopping center, not for this particular restaurant, right?
Well, for this fast food restaurant, it is part of the shopping center.
Right.
So it will share those ingress egresses, like all of the other out parcels.
But there is no direct out to the street? It's all into the interior parking of River Bridge, correct?
Correct. All of the eight parcels are, have indirect access from the master site.
Right.
None of them have direct access onto the road.
There's no drive-in from the street and drive-out?
Right. Which is consistent with what they've done for the previously planned out parcels and development on the site.
Okay.
And, you know, we like to, we like to limit the number of cuts that they have onto roadways. And there is the signalized intersection at River Bridge Boulevard as well. But that also serves the residential community, the signalized intersection. They are providing a dumpster recycling area with masonry wall, enclosures, and opaque gates that will match the colors and the architecture of the building. There is a special exception, as I said before, with a drive-through lane with one-way circulating parking. This requires the bypass. So the site, when you enter it, has a one-way circulation for their, for their 19 spaces. So for their drive-through, which is actually on the outer edge or of the site, they are providing a bypass lane. They have requested to utilize the bypass lane for additional queuing capacity during peak hours of service for them, so that they can increase the queuing capacity for the site to pull as much of their customers off of the plaza road or entrance exits, ingresses, and keep them on-site to keep them moving. They are required to have a management plan. Anyone here who's been to a Chick-fil-A sees that they are quite versed in, in their management plans, and they usually pull a lot of traffic through at peak demand times for them, which are lunchtime and dinnertime, sometimes breakfast times. They provide all three meals. So the management plan is a condition of approval for when they are utilizing the bypass lane. They have to also have a management plan for getting people out of that plan in case something happens within, you know, within the, within the lanes while, while they're giving services. So this is a condition of approval that they will have to accept, and they're aware of that. So this is the site plan for the building. As I said, they're proposing a 4,680 square foot building on the site. Just a little bit of a closer look, they have 19 parking spaces. They have their area for their garbage and refuge pickup as well. They have the queuing lanes on the outer edges perimeter of the site. They do have bicycle parking for the site as well. And they will utilize, they have put in a crosswalk to the parking spaces within the plaza, because they are part of the plaza. And they will possibly be utilizing some of those spaces as designated pickup and drop-off spaces for, some of you are aware that they also do ordering online, and you can park in a parking spot and pick up your lunch without getting into the queue for, for the This is the floor plan for the building itself. They're proposed, they have, a majority of it is kitchen, they have the accessory uses and the dining area. This is the drivin', drive-in lanes. I'm sure you're familiar, probably saw this when you looked at the special exception. They're proposing, proposing a drive-through lane, and then they are also providing a bypass lane so that you can, in some instances, we use these for banks in areas where if someone decides, oh, I don't want to order here, they can get out of the queue. In some cases, that's not possible until you are able, until it becomes your turn. But we do have the provision of the bypass lane, and they'll utilize this extra bypass lane during peak demand hours to pull more people, so they will be queuing in it. Yes?
Good, good question. To the east, the lot to the east, it looks like this bypass lane and drive-through lane is initiated right next to the plot to the east. Am I correct?
So this, this parcel right here, I think it's the Applebee's?
Okay.
Okay. So they, they have their ingress egress here.
Yep.
And they will have an ingress egress for this site as well.
Okay.
You want me to go back to the larger?
Well, no, it just looks like they enter from the side.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
They're coming from the, from within the plaza.
Okay.
Just like the others.
Yep.
There's like a slight separation.
Okay.
So the applicant was required to get their traffic approved by Palm Beach County for concurrency, because the county gives approval for concurrency. We also have our own traffic reviewer that looks at traffic impacts from the perspective of our roadways that the city has, as well as, they look at the development impacts as well. And that is Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and we've been using a traffic engineer who's, who's very familiar with our city. They went through review processes, and they were required to do some additional analysis for the site, which, as you know, we get drive-throughs through here a lot. They don't seem to have the same demand. I'm sure they wish they did, that Chick-fil-A has. But Chick-fil-A does bring in a lot of traffic, which is why they've created these management plans for their, for their site. So when we look at what, what the traffic is originally for the site, the county's going to look at, you know, your overall AM peak hours, which is your morning hours, your PM peak hours, which is when everybody gets off work and gets back on the street. And they look at the overall daily traffic impacts as well. And they also look how this traffic is distributed on the streets. How much of this traffic is actually going to go out and go west on Forest Hill Boulevard? They're saying about 25%. They're saying about 25% is going to go east on Forest Hill Boulevard through the various ingress egress. And then you have about the same on a jog road, where they'll put the additional 25% going north and 25% going south. Some of them might be getting on the Turnpike, but in many cases, you know, you'll see fast food restaurants that are right off interstates, I-95, or the Turnpike, and they have a large demand. This one is a little more, we don't have direct access to I-95 or, so most of the traffic is going to be coming from the local, from the neighborhoods in the area, north, southeast, and west. And so they've kind of distributed it evenly in those directions for the site from, you know, based on the demand. The two nearest Chick-fil-A's, you have one on State Road 7, that is actually north on State Road 7 of where Forest Hill intersects. And then you've got the one on Lantana Road, that's just east of South Jog Road. In this case, this applicant not only looked at peak demands, they looked at the other Chick-fil-A's around the county and what those demands were. They, they studied how much queuing they utilize. They looked at the queuing and, and the peak demand that they're showing is at about 13 cars. They have provided capacity on, on the actual Chick-fil-A area for 16. There will be some queuing that goes out into the lanes, but if you are, you know, you've driven through River Bridge Plaza, which I'm sure every one of you have, there are a lot of different options for traffic to flow within the development, you know, alternative access points. So the applicant can get further into this if you want them to. They also were required by us to do an analysis of the intersection impacts at River Bridge Boulevard and Forest Hill. And they've actually done some modeling on that as well, and some YouTube videos for it. These are the elevations for the site. They're proposing the dark gray, the light gray, with the Chick-fil-A red, signature red color for their signage. The applicant is permitted to have up to three signs. We allow the out parcels to utilize River Bridge Boulevard, Forest Hill Boulevard, and South Jog Road as their signage for the site. This is usually, this is straight code, so it's, you know, it's not usually, they can do a master plan, too, though, that can be approved separately. In your packets, I did put the colors as brown for, it was for, originally, they submitted the, the brown model, but that was a mistake, I didn't update it. They actually are going with the gray building. They are providing landscaping around the perimeter of their site, and as required, with landscape islands, as well as the foundation planning around the building. They're actually improving the landscaping area in the front. As you know, we have, River Bridge has been around, as I said, since the 80s, and the actual buffer is smaller than we would require nowadays for new development. The applicant is not making the situation worse, they've actually expanded the buffer a little bit for the site, and they provided landscaping within the site for, per our code as well. They actually, they have access to sewer hookup as well as water. It'll be in the rear of the building. And overall, we have recommended approval with about 22 conditions of approval relative to the site, and staff is recommending approval of the application that they've submitted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
The applicant, as he has a presentation to.
The applicant want to make a presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Nicholas Haygood, representing Chick-fil-A with Bowler Engineering. With me as well, Andrew Savage from Bowler, and also the landscape architect Brett Waldman. So any questions about the landscaping improvements or anything of that nature, you know, we'll be able to address in addition to what I've got in this presentation. As you can see, there's some, a couple of renderings of the building on this title slide. Those do match the elevations that were shown. So we think that, you know, these new Chick-fil-A's are looking pretty good. On this slide, you know, we're just showing the surrounding conditions. You can see our site outlined in red, the proposed Chick-fil-A site. We're showing as well the uses of the adjacent out parcels to the plaza, and then also the full-service driveway off of Forest Hill Boulevard, about 150 to 200 feet west of our, our small section of the site, and then the right-in, left-in. And then the right-in, left-in, right-out driveway onto Jog Road, about two hundred fifty to three hundred feet southeast. So this is where our, our location is proposed to be. As you can see from the existing site conditions, the buffer is a little bit bare. The buffers are not in excellent condition on this site. As I believe Cara was speaking to, they're, they're fairly old and a little bit outdated with the modern code. And so as a result of that, part of our proposal is we're, we're really, really putting a lot more into those buffers. We're going to be improving the landscaping of the perimeter of the site quite a bit. And on this next slide, I've actually got the landscape plan. It was in Cara's presentation as well, but you can see here the increase in the number of trees on each of the property lines, as well as the expanded north buffer. I believe we expanded it by about two feet. We're adding a bunch of trees. So overall, we're, we're enhancing the landscape features of the site pretty substantially. As for other services that this site is going to provide, as it stands right now, it's just a vacant parking lot. Based on, you know, my, my trips to the site, at night, it's, it's not all that well lit. From what we've been able to tell, the, the drainage on that site isn't great and there's sometimes a little bit of storm water, you know, sort of ponding, standing water in the site. So we're addressing all of those concerns. In addition to that, you may know that there's a bus stop, a Palm Tran bus stop directly to the north of the site on Forest Hill Boulevard. We're actually, in our opinion, with the increased lighting to the site and the increased landscape buffering, we believe that we're increasing the safety at that bus stop. And then also, as I'm sure many of you are aware, I'm sure a lot of you have been to Chick-fil-A's recently, they've got a very efficient drive-through. So we believe that that's a valuable service as well. So as Cara went over, our proposed use is a drive-through restaurant. This is going to serve both sit-down customers and it's going to serve customers in the drive-through as well. We've got our, our sort of dual-lane drive-through that Cara was speaking about. Under normal conditions, for most of the day, it's going to operate as a single-lane drive-through. But during peak hours, which are typically for Chick-fil-A between twelve and two PM and between five and seven PM, they're able to open up the outside lane of the drive-through and use it as an additional drive-through lane to increase the number of vehicles that they're able to have, you know, onsite in the drive-through. And the way that that actually works is they've got team members outside taking orders on iPads in that, underneath that canopy you see on the north side of the site. And in addition to that, instead of a drive-through window, at this location, there will actually be a drive-through door, a sliding door rather than a window, where the team members will be able to walk outside from the drive-through window and be able to hand-deliver the food to vehicles to maximize the efficiency. And in addition to that, we are also improving the drainage on the site. We are providing water quality treatment for the storm water that goes through our site, which was previously not provided. Here, I've got a couple of video simulations that were produced based on data that was found by Chick-fil-A at their, their single-drive-through restaurants versus their dual-lane drive-through restaurants. As I spoke about earlier, the hours of the dual-lane operation are likely going to be from about twelve to two PM and five to seven PM, although each Chick-fil-A store has one store manager. By Chick-fil-A's policy, that manager is not allowed to manage other stores, whether they be Chick-fil-A's or any other, any other restaurants, because their sole focus is on the effectiveness, the efficiency of their restaurant. So those hours may change of what their, their peak hours are to reflect what the traffic they see on a regular basis is, but generally, that's going to be about twelve to two PM. On these simulations, I'm not sure if you can read it. I know that the text is a little bit small, but I'll play these in a second. But you can see that top number where it says "drive-through" and the, the number right next to it is the average time that it takes when someone enters the drive-through until they get their food and can leave. And as you'll see, it's, it's dramatically reduced on the dual-lane drive-through and they're able to serve nearly twice as many customers this way. So I'll go ahead and play those simulations now.
Do I click on them?
Uh, yes, you can click the play button in the bottom left. Thank you.
Sure.
As you can see from that simulation, sometimes one person with a particularly large order or someone who isn't necessarily sure what they want when they get to the window can sort of hold up the drive-through a little bit. What we'll see in the second simulation is that rather than that being a problem, you know, the other vehicles can have their order taken by another team member and go right around the car that's taking a little bit of extra time. The fact that the team members are able to walk out and deliver the, the food on foot out to the vehicles increases the efficiency even more. As you can see from these simulations, the, the efficiency is, is dramatically increased by this dual-lane sort of capability. So again, under normal conditions, the drive-through won't be, you know, completely stacked to the, to the end of the site during, you know, all, all times of the day. But when they are seeing additional traffic, they are able to open up that second lane and see a lot more, see and serve customers a lot more quickly. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
You said that you're going to be planting lots of trees. How about the sites? Will it be, what am I trying to say? If you're driving, will the trees be in any way, shape, or form, you be able to see the traffic?
Will you be able to see, are you speaking about be able to see the, the drive-through from Forest Hill Boulevard or?
Yeah, I guess so, yes.
That's something that Brett Waldman may be able to address a little bit more appropriately.
Good evening. Can you just, yeah?
I'm sorry, can you, can both of you just state your name and spell it for the record too? And anybody who speaks at the podium, if you could do that, that would be great for those.
It's Brett Waldman, Senior Landscape Architect for Bowler. It's B-R-E-T-T-W-A-L-D-M-A-N. So just to understand your concern, are you, are you asking from Forest Hill what the view onto the site would be?
Getting out of the lanes, the double or the single lanes, will the trees be in any way, shape, or form blocking traffic coming through River Bridge?
No, no. Everything, all planting material was chosen, the species were chosen specifically for the site. And as far as any conflicts with vehicular traffic, there should not be.
My name is Nicholas Haged.
Are there any other questions or any other comments?
I've got a comment. Congratulations on designing that out of our head on a, that's a, that's a tremendous benefit to customers and your staff.
Yes, yeah. Chick-fil-A has spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the best way to do everything is. I think that they put a lot more time into it than some of the other restaurants do and I, I personally think it shows.
Any comments from the audience? Can you, can you go to the, do you mind going to the podium and giving your name?
Yes, Barbara Boleen. I just have a concern about the traffic off of Jog going into the plaza because there isn't much leeway there and that really stacks anyway. That's my only concern.
I'm sorry, did she state her name for the record?
Yes.
She did, okay.
That was one of the things that our traffic study particularly looked at, since there are just those two entrances. Based on the results of our traffic study, it's not anticipated to be an issue. The, the queuing at that left-turn lane, I imagine, is, is your primary concern. Based on the results of our traffic study, based on the fact that there is also the entrance off of Forest Hill Boulevard, our traffic engineer's opinion was that that should not be expected to be a concern.
If there are no other questions, perhaps we should proceed to a vote. No questions? All those in favor?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve SP-85-12 RR Chick-fil-A.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, having just listened to the, all the information about a quasi-judicial hearing. This is on BA dash, pardon? Dash twenty-three dash O-two, four sixty-five, Swain Boulevard. The petitioner is requesting three variances from the following code provisions. Do you guys want to read it or do you want me to read it? You want me to read it or you want to read it? Okay. The variance, the first variance, Chapter sixteen, Article eight, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Parking Standards, Section sixteen dash thirteen thirty-six, to allow for the location and reduced number of parking spaces from the required nine spaces, three spaces per unit, to three for a reduction of six parking spaces. And V-two, Chapter sixteen, Article eight, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Parking Standards, Section sixteen, thirteen thirty-seven, to allow for reduced parallel parking space length dimensions from the required ten feet wide by twenty-four feet long space to be eleven feet wide by twenty feet long for two spaces and eleven feet wide by twenty-two point eight feet long for the third space. And variance three, Chapter sixteen, Article eight, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Parking Standards, Section sixteen dash thirteen thirty-nine, to allow for three driveway entrances, each at fifteen feet wide, instead of the required twenty-five feet for a two-way traffic flow. Is there, do you want to make a?
So the applicant, as it's quasi-judicial, my understanding the applicant goes first and then I'll do my presentation following.
Yep.
So if you can state name and spelling for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Cabrera, Cabrera, C-A-B-R-E-R-A. So I am the president and CEO of the Brand X Company. I have for quite some time been invested in the original section of Green Acres for, you know, probably definitely for the last four years.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Oh, there it, there it goes. Okay, all right. So for the past four years, I've been pretty heavily invested in the original section of Green Acres. I have, fun fact, I grew up in this area, so I played ball at the recreational building for basketball and football. And you might have seen, let's see if this works. No, slide, I guess.
Is it not working? Sorry.
It's all right. So you might have seen different projects of mine throughout that original section. This is pretty typical of what it looks like. We've built multiple on Martin Avenue. This is Swain Boulevard. This is actually directly south of the property that we're talking about today. And we've also built quite a few on Broward as well. Yeah, slide please. So a little over a year ago, I purchased this property from the original owner who's had this for, for years, since the sixties. This is what it's looked, looked like for a minimum of twenty years, minimum. It was his preference to leave that building mostly vacant and there's been one tenant in there on, on the right side of the screen. He was there for a few years, but it's pretty much was vacant. You see a lot of, there's, there's pretty much no parking area. That parking that's there right, well, what is there on the right-hand side of that screen was just some mat that was left, you know, put down the ground and they kind of just drove over it, however they felt. You know, mailboxes were ugly, really no landscaping and no curb appeal whatsoever. So basically, I'm kind of adopting a, a property that had a lot of problems. And I went ahead and did as much as we could to kind of get it to where it was really good, not just for the city, but obviously for my tenants. You know, I want people to be proud of, you know, where they, where they rent. You know, my whole brand, we, we center around taking care of our people and making sure that they're happy where they're at. And if there's issues, we take care of it. We've done a lot of, a lot of different properties that you'll see examples of. And honestly, we're here because there's no other choice. I originally proposed to try to put nine parking spaces. I want two to three parking spaces for each unit. That's what I would like, you know, off-street parking, but the site does not allow. Original codes from when this was built allowed three units on these kind of properties. And we have this problem on many properties in Green Acres, or in the original section of Green Acres. It's something that over time, I think you'll start to see more of as people try to buy some of these multifamily units and want to improve them, which will obviously be really good for that section. So unfortunately, you know, we are limited severely in what we can do for parking. And the original allowance for this site was one space per unit. And the way it originally was done is essentially from the left, west side of that building, there was an entryway and the east side of the building, there's an entryway. Nothing in the middle as what you see here now. So the person who has the middle unit or is the middle car is, is going to be stuck and is, is going to be problematic. They're going to opt to park across the street, which is another problem on Fourth Street that we don't want to have. So even though my permitted right says I can go in here, I could have saved myself a minimum of six months of headache and, and not been hurt by at least thirty thousand dollars in lost rent, I fought to try to make a better parking for not only, you know, my rent, my tenants, but for Green Acres. Because again, this is a problem you're going to see moving forward in other properties. So my plan here is essentially to, after lots of discussion with staff, to have a third entry, which will at the very least allow more of a free-flowing parking. And it's really dependent on who, who's home first and who's not. So ideally, to give you an example, the unit that's on the west side, there's a parking that's labeled as one. There's enough space there for them to turn in from either the middle entry or the, the west entry and park their car parallel to the building without being in the way of the drive, of that drive, drive-in. The same applies to two and three, where there's about forty feet there, which is more than enough space for a, two cars to be parked in that area, whether it's, you know, face-on, butt-to-butt. I mean, it depends on who's there. There will be scenarios where there's nobody home, but the middle unit came home and they decided that they wanted to come from the east side to come in and they parked their car in space number two, facing the middle out driveway. And then later, car number three comes and parks in that spot. So for him, it's easy. He just pulls out, facing forward to the street, goes to that stop sign right, right there on that corner, and he's on his way. So the idea was just to kind of allow more free-flowing. And if you could give me a s- And if you could give me a slide, please? So, this is a property that I... One of my first properties I bought, at least, six years ago. And over time, I've been able to improve it. Slide? Another slide? And again, this is to kind of give you a depiction of how there's, you know, no landscaping. It's kind of, you know, it's okay-looking, but it's really not appealing. Next slide? And this is what it looks like now. My intent with this property is the same, and I know there's some pictures of what it looks like currently, but the end result will look very similar to this. We already had the stucco banding on the building, because we've gone through some other permitting process, like impact windows, replacing the roof, you know, doing things to make sure this building was nice. So, what you see here, multiple layer of landscaping. It's definitely irrigated, always well-maintained. We have it scheduled about three times a month. It's... Grass is cut, nothing's overgrown. Next slide? We have clear parking that's identified. We have guest parking that's identified. So, you know, each tenant knows which spots is their spot. So, next slide? What you also will see in this slide, we have adequate lighting, which on this particular property, there was none. So, it was pretty dark on that street. And this is, again, this is in Palm Springs. Next slide? This will be a pretty pixelated photo, but this is off 10th Avenue. Any of you can definitely... May have actually seen this property. It's right before Walmart. It is... So, on 10th Avenue, east of... Excuse me, west of Walmart. This is what it looked like from 10th Avenue. Next slide? And this is what it looked like, again, going along 10th Avenue, and this is 10th and High Street. Again, very little landscaping. Really, it was just not well-maintained. Here we are, three layers of landscaping, new trees, a nice new privacy, like, you know, four-foot fence by code, that's what we need. So, because people used to actually go in between all that from walking on 10th Avenue. So, we put that to an end. Next slide? And again, we're identifying parking, everything's clean, everything's well-maintained. Next slide? We always like to try to have some sort of common area that is, again, for our tenants to have quiet enjoyment. And next slide? This is a property off of Gulfstream Road that we did in Palm Springs. It was a brand-new complex, four buildings. I wanted to be able to show you what the insides looked like. All my finishes for even the houses that we build, all those single-family homes we've been building, we have two more that just started on Walker Avenue in second. They all look very similar to this. This is what it looks like outside for this Gulfstream property. Again, I just want to depict that I am somebody who I'm doing my best, not only for the people who I'm leasing out to, but for the cities that I'm involved in. I believe that might be... Next slide? Yeah. So, essentially, we're only here because this particular property has a lot of non-conforming issues that, you know, we're handed down, its grandfather's into this, but we're trying to do the best what we can for this property. So, if you have any questions along the way, as Denise does her presentation as well, I'd be more than happy to answer. If you have any right now, I'd be more than happy to answer. Yes?
I have one question. Around the back of that building...
Yeah.
Is there any room for parking back there?
For the site in question?
Yes.
Can you pull the site plan up, please?
I can put it on mine.
Okay. So, unfortunately, no. This...
It's not wide enough.
Yeah, this property on the behind, again, today's standard, no way, this would never in a million years be approved. But it's, you know, what we have to deal with. So, we do the best we can. There's about 10 feet or so, I believe, from the building to property line. So, the intent there, we're going to have landscaping along that... There's actually a fence that is along that between the three new houses that I built, and then the property in question. We'll be adding some more hedging and to kind of give it some privacy, definitely in between each unit. But both sides of the property have about... One side has 20 feet, the other side has about 15 feet, close to that. That's the intent, to be used as common area for these tenants. You know, if their kids want to play, you know, something out in the yard, they have these areas that will be protected and landscaped around to, you know, for their quiet enjoyment.
Thanks for...
Yeah, good.
...not doing my presentation. For the record, Denise Malone, Director Development, Neighborhood Services. As Brandon indicated, this site is for 465 Swain Boulevard. The item before you is a request for three different variances. The location of the property is at Fourth Street and Swain Boulevard. As Brandon indicated earlier in his presentation, this is a previous picture of the way the site looked, and this is the way that the site currently looks with the improvements that he's made on the property. As you can see in the front, between the sidewalk and the property, it's very narrow, which is the reason for which Brandon has been... has put the request in for those parallel parking spaces. And then you can see its proximity to the existing roadway. This area between the sidewalk and the roadway being the right-of-way and not being able to park within that area. So, it gives a limited amount of space on the property for them to actually be able to park the site. The variance request does include the three variances as read earlier. The first is to Chapter 16-1336, to allow for the location and the reduced number of parking spaces from nine down to three, so it's a reduction of six parking spaces. The second variance being requested is to allow, is Chapter 16, Section 16-1337, to allow for the reduced parallel parking space dimensions from the required 10 feet wide by 24-foot-long space. They will be less than that. One will be 11 by 20 feet long, or, excuse me, two will be 11 by 20 feet long, and then the one space at 11-foot wide by 22.8 feet long. The third variance being requested is Chapter 16, Section 16-1339, to allow for three parking driveway... Excuse me, driveway entrances, to be able to park the site in the parking spaces as indicated. Each of those driveway entrances is to be 15 feet wide, instead of the required 25-foot wide, which is for two-way traffic flow. As indicated earlier, this is a diagram indicating the three parking spaces. I did hand this revised drawing to you at your spots, so that you could see where the actual, not only the circle indicating the three parking space locations, but also to give you an idea of the actual dimensions and where the parking would occur. The ingress and egress has a challenge. We would like to alleviate as much as possible the backing out onto the street, especially given that this is at the... at an intersection. But we do recognize the constraints of the existing site and, you know, how it can accommodate those three parking spaces. The variance criteria that is required to be met in the code, there are six different criteria. The first is special conditions and circumstances. The second, actions of the applicant. Third, special privileges. Fourth, the literal interpretation, the code. Next is the minimum, that it would be a minimum amount of a variance, and then the last, the non-conforming use of neighboring lands. In the staff report, we went through each of those items and indicated that they actually do meet those six variance criteria. In addition, the staff report also addresses the item of it being contrary to the public interest, and that there has not... that it would not create... that there has not been self-induced financial hardship. Staff has looked at these variance criteria, all of which are indicated that he has met those, as indicated by the backup of the staff report and the associated materials. Staff is recommending approval of the request with the addition of three recommended conditions of approval. The first is a standard condition that, within six months' date of approval, should that occur, the variance... of the variance that the development order would be recorded. The second is that the leasing documents associated with the rentals shall clearly state that only one parking space is associated with the respected unit, that the parking shall only occur in designated permitted parking spaces, which would be those three as delineated, and that there would not be any on-street parking, nor any parking over the sidewalk, which is not allowed by the city. Furthermore, we would be asking that all occupants of the units are notified in writing by the property owner prior to actually occupying their unit. They would be notified of the location and the parking restrictions for the property, given that it's very restricted. Also, all city code provisions regarding parking must continue to be met. And the third one that we are recommending is that the property have the clearly marked parking areas, which would be their parking spaces, and that we work with the applicant prior to permitting to provide for some kind of demarcation or looking further at the directional flow and providing some kind of indication or signage for that, and that that would occur, again, through the permitting process. And we would like to make sure to do whatever is possible to assist in proper ingress and egress, discouraging backing out into the street as much as possible. So, we are recommending those three conditions, and staff seeks your decision regarding those variances as requested.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Is there a reason why you didn't have an assigned parking? One, two, three? I'll bet you have no children. I can just imagine what's going to happen.
So, the intent of how it is drawn out, when we speak to our tenants, you know, if it's your unit one, which is that west unit, we're going to say, this is your parking area. This is where you should be parking.
Ah.
You know, as you've kind of seen in like the other photos that I have, there's no numbering on any of our parking, but we make it very clear, hey, this is your parking. And we also... A fun fact for you guys, we run a pretty tight ship when it comes to like how we lease and who we're leasing to. So, one of the also standards that will be in the lease, along with the conditions that were proposed, is each one of our tenants actually get decals on their cars, no matter what the property is, so that we ourselves know who is the tenant, who isn't, you know, who's visiting, who's not visiting. So, essentially, yes. These are technically assigned areas. They won't be... They'll be marked as like, as this is a parking area, but right now, the intent is not to number it, but it will be pretty straightforward that if you're this side, this is your parking. Middle's number two and three.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think a guy coming home from work...
Yeah.
...and somebody else's parking.
Yeah. Yes.
Quick question. It looks to me like who... The only way to get out of your parking spot is to drive over the sidewalk.
No. They put... See the arrows?
Yep, I see the arrows.
Well, just like any driveway for any of our single-family homes, I mean, you are technically, you are driving through the sidewalk to get onto the property.
You're going to be putting in driveways there.
Yes, exactly that. And we actually took it a step further. I would have liked to have an extra foot, but it's kind of hard to see. But there is about a foot of space from the sidewalk to the beginning of that, like, actual parking area. And we're going to put Green Island Ficus... Yeah, Green Island Ficus is the name of the plant. It's about a two-foot hedge. It won't be... You will be... It'll be clear of any obstructions. You'll be able to see directly down Fourth Street. You'll be able to see at the intersection about any issue. But, you know, it just, again, adds a little more of that barrier, too, for people who are walking on that sidewalk.
Okay.
That's a shame.
Yep.
Where will people be parking if they have guests or something?
Yeah, so, the intent in my mind would be that it would be a temporarily... They would... Ideally, I would have them park down the street. There's a parking for your rec facility right off Fourth. Ideally, we would direct them that way.
That's locked when that building is closed.
No, 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 it's off-street. Yeah, there's a part that is for that, and then there's a part that's directly off the street. So, ideally, it would be that. For guests who are coming in for a quick five minutes to pick somebody up, you know, they're going to pull up real quick, pick them up, and back out. I think that's the reality of how it would actually function. But overnight, any extended stays, no one should be blocking any of that sidewalk, and that's going to be one of our principal things that we're going to be monitoring, as, you know, we have a few staff members. Michael here, he's somebody that will be also, you know, making rounds of the properties, making sure that everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And there was no mathematical way you could park straight in toward the building?
So, that was my initial proposal, and that's the only way I could actually get nine spaces or 10 spaces. The only way that's feasible or possible is by Green Acres giving up a roughly five or six feet of right-of-way, and pushing that sidewalk closer to the road about, I think it would be closer to almost three feet or so, four feet or so from the road, which is a public safety concern at that point. There are different areas, actually, if you go down the street, Fourth and Jennings, it does push to the road. Yeah, you've seen that. So, but ideally, that's not what Green Acres would like, and I agree. I wish it wasn't the case. I would really love it to be the other way around, but it's just not in the cards, unfortunately. Yes? Yeah.
What happened with the potential streetscape that's going to be developed on Swain Boulevard?
So, we... So, your streetscape? Go ahead.
Would that be interfering with your parking?
No. There is a... So, just to give you an idea, on the east side of that property, currently, the sidewalk comes in and dives at an angle towards Swain. Your plan, and I worked with the engineer, I was kind of working with that, we're going to keep our landscape buffer... I mean, it's going to be kind of hard to see there, but you can kind of see how it kind of comes out to Swain. We'll keep all our landscaping and our, like, you know, different layers that we do on our property, so when you guys do your nice new wide sidewalks, it won't be in the way whatsoever. And then, there's definitely no interference on that corner, because I won't be planting anything. It would just be grass right there in that corner of Fourth and Swain. And then, the only thing that you have is an extended, kind of like miniature median coming on Fourth. That shouldn't be an issue as well. Everybody who's coming out, especially that third parking space that's all the way to the east, they're not going to try to... The way it's set up, they'll be coming out and going through Fourth, regardless of which direction they're going.
Are these apartments identical, all three?
Yeah, they're all exactly the same.
Two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, one bath.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the BA-23-02 465 Swain Boulevard, requesting the three variances. Should I read the... V1, V2, and V3 of Chapter 16.
Do I hear a second?
With the... Excuse me, with the... Three what?
With staff's three recommended conditions of approval.
Yeah, with the three staff recommendations included.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you for doing this. That's good. Any concluding remarks?
Available for rent.
When? Hopefully by this point, I guess, if the meeting happens, maybe September or so.
That's great. Any concluding remarks? Nope.
Next meeting?
Do you have a date for the next meeting?
It'll be next month. So, August 17th.
August what?
No, I'm worn off. August 10th. Right, second Thursday.
Is that what you said, August 17th?
I got it wrong. August 10th.
Okay, August.
Yes, we're looking. There's a couple items, depending on where they fell with DRC, so...
Okay.
And you know what, on the first approval that we did, I'm not sure we included the recommendations by staff.
There weren't any, were there?
The conditions of approval that were in the staff report?
They were built in.
They were, yeah, it was all built in there. There were no conditions.
Yeah, there were 23 conditions, weren't there?
It was recommending that, which was put forward in the staff report, and the staff report has the recommended conditions. I think the motion.
I think just to clarify, more importantly, with the applicant, that they don't object to any of the conditions, so then you could issue the order that the approval was inclusive of the 35 staff conditions. If there's an issue with the applicant, then obviously we need to bring it back.
They were in concurrence with all of the conditions. That's what their indication to us was.
Thank you. No further discussion. Meeting is adjourned.